How long that your next meeting in a month away?
Our next meeting.
No, wait.
Well, if it went through the board again, it'd be next month.
So long?
Next month.
Yeah, we we are really going to make this happen. The longer we wait, every month we make is like a month and a half, two months delay on the building. And each time you do that, the amount of money we're talking here, think about it, is forty-five thousand five hundred dollars. That's the amount of money. In a million dollar budget for this type of project, it's a drop in the bucket. Is it worth forty-five thousand five hundred dollars for the city to delay a project for up to two, three, four months? When our critical housing shortage happened yesterday, it isn't happening tomorrow, it happened yesterday. So the more you have these meetings, and I've been time after time after time, they go in, you have the meetings, you hash, you're rounding, and then let's talk about it next month. These houses need to be built now. And that's why if you delay, and you, and I understand, I was at the board meeting, and I understand some of the negotiating things that can happen in time. I need the city, I would like the city to at least tell us that they are, and we can pass it on, that they are definitely interested in helping Wentz County move forward with the new housing projects. We can have, we can have this discussion down the road, but let's get the houses started. Let's do it now, let's what, let's don't wait. So let's don't walk out this door and say, oh, I think that was a good idea, and then six months later somebody say, oh, we need housing. Well, guess what, we needed it about five years ago.
Well, I like that, something to that, you look at what the city of Reno did, I brought that up this morning. Their goal by their mayor was build a thousand to twelve hundred homes in a hundred and thirty days, a hundred and twenty days. They didn't waive the water sewer hookups. They made a deal with the contractor over a period of five years, it would be paid over. This is what I see here, you may call that a lousy, you said lousy, forty-five thousand five hundred dollars. But let me tell you something, we just raised all the residents, the people who use the city water, three percent. You tell those people that that was a lousy deal. Those people, uh, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, what's thirty-five hundred bucks? What is thirty-five hundred dollars? I just had my daughter build a house in Spanish Springs. That's just the way it goes, man. You bought, you had, you get a house, you got, you want water and sewer, you have to pay for it, that's the way I look at it.
In most big cities.
They're the way to work on it.
In most big cities, they build their, they build their roads, they, the developer is in charge, or they give them the land, they build the roads. But you talk about what you just got done saying. Okay, you're great, you had to raise the rates for whatever reason, but by not building the houses, you're telling sixty, a hundred workers, you're not welcome here, because we don't have any place for you to live.
You said that.
I am saying that because that's a fact, Jack. What the deal is, if we don't have housing, we don't have a place to put these people when they come to go to work. If they can't work here, they're gonna work somewhere else.
That being said too, if you give the developer thirty-six months to build them, most of these projects will be wrapped up, and the workers will be leaving. Granted, we can still use them, don't get me wrong, but the housing crunch and the, the mass majority will be tricking out after the thirty-six month period.
For too many years, we thought that Kenny Todd mentality, if the mine goes down, the whole community's going down.
No, no, just the workers from their structure.
I understand what you're saying, but you're, you're saying that the population's gonna be an exodus out of here. As we grow like any other city, as you build a seven eleven, or you build a store, four or five others come in, we've got franchise businesses here. If you close the door on them, and we're not worried about, I am not in the mindset to think that you're only gonna have to have this housing shortage for thirty-six months. This housing shortage is gonna be for long after we're here, and our children are here. The housing is gonna need to be deep. I lived here when the terrace was built and there was no house, I moved in there when they were built sixty years ago. Had they not built those houses, Kenny Todd would have shut their doors. That's what I'm talking about. And so the county is asking the city to join with us, to help us get these houses, to make a decision, to move forward with the county to get the houses done.
I'll entertain a motion on this item before we have further discussion.
Am I, are you, are you, are there any more questions of me? I thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it, I really do, thank you very much.
It's, it's not a favorable opinion, but I'm in, I'm in favor of approving this. But what do we, if the, if the utility board recommends, um, peopling, is there anything that we're gonna be able to do to move past the roadblock to, to work with? I mean.
I think it's something worth working on, and I don't wanna postpone the county, but with that being said too, I'm not gonna write off the whole thing, or have no desire to write off the whole thing, and I think at that point, we'd be working outside the agenda items, so I would table it, maybe let the, the county come back with a different proposal, and I like the idea of having the contractor pay as he goes, you know? Four lots, five lots, whatever he builds, you know, 'cause, and like Winkle, maybe, maybe they don't make the money they need on the first floor, don't wanna do anymore. I, I don't know, I don't know the stipulation of their contract.
Yes.
Well, there's various, various ways these things happen, and some of you, you purchase a home, and you come up to the city of Reno and help the services, you have to sign in to get the services. In other communities, another way they've done that, where after you've purchased a home, and you go to apply for the services, you're paying the services fee at that time. To stick somebody with a forty-five hundred dollar bill where they just bought a brand new house is not a necro way to work. I think there could be some kind of negotiation here, and I think it should be worked out to, like is said, we're raising rates on water and sewer in this community, because we need the money to keep the thing in operation, or else none of us will have that operation, and we'll be putting out more communes in, in our community again. But on the other hand, somehow, uh, somebody should, should come to be equitable to the city and to the county and to the developer.
I'd be using for that.
Yeah, but I'd like to say that at this time, if this was the comfortable habit, totally against. We have, many, many people have property in this community that have paid the full water sewer hookup fees. They paid the, uh, water and utility fees, which they have to do. I don't think that this is something of good faith that I could do, but other property owners that may wanna build one home, we waive it, I hate, once you waive, such waiver of fees, you just as well open the door, and this developer bought this property for a thousand, one hundred bucks, that's forty-five thousand, nothing compared with the value of the property he just got. Unbelievable, the amount of money he just gave me on that deal already. So I'm, I'm, I'm totally against it, if you did a vote tonight, I would be absolutely.
I, I just think we have to keep in mind the work that has been done to recruit a developer to come in here and do this. It's been years, and over and over, we, we have these people who say, well, I can't come in and buy, and build houses for anyone that's a four hundred grand. Well, nobody's gonna buy that here, nobody can. So I, I mean, I think, I, I think to just completely discount that this has some value, and that, I mean, then we're, we're building, like Commissioner House said, we're building thirteen new houses, who are now paying landfill fees and sewer fees and, and water fees, and are spending money in our stores, and who are having family and friends come and visit them and stay in our hotels. I just, I just think to, to, I, I don't know, I mean, there's something that needs to be done.
I.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
I just want to remind the council that we are federally assisted utilities, we receive federal funds through our C D G grants. We have them that we're working on right now, that we received last year. And so if we're assisting virtually a private developer, that's what's on the table tonight, that could be an issue.
And I, I think there are things the city can look at to assist with some economic development like this. And if, if the council is, is not favorable towards this as presented, I think as the, the utility work has suggested, maybe tabling it, and coming back with one or two other options that are more palatable to our system, to the organization, and to whatever, that we can still, that we can still participate and help the county do that. But, and I, you know, I, I understand all the points taken, when you start waiving fees, you know, where, where do you, where do you stop?
Mr. Mayor, it sounds to me like the other contractor, maybe the contractor should be here. Can you afford forty-five hundred dollars for thirty, thirty-five hundred dollars a house? That's the deal, it's not the county not gonna pay it, it's the contractor. So what are we jawing over this right here? Bring the contractor in and say, hey, is this gonna make or break the deal?
And maybe, maybe that's one of the proposals we float.
Okay, that's.
I mean, I, I think tabling this and coming back with one or two other proposals, it's not a bad idea, given the climate of how the board feels about this, and I think that's better, that's a better option than, than just voting on it, and saying no, but that's, that's my two cents, I won't be voting on it either way, so.
Well, you know, the, the motion to table with the caveat of the contractor, come to the meeting, consider the financial impact on it.
Well.
I will second that, so I have a motion and a second, do you have something else I had to?
Well, in respect, what I'd like to see is appoint three members of this council to meet with the contractor, and not have to wait until the city council meets. So they can come back with a, and with the water board, and the, and the developer per se, and the county, and all of it, and come to an agreement, or whatever, instead of waiting a month or two months, or whatever.
So no adjournments, we have a motion and a second, do we have further comments? I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried in so order, I have a table. We'll move on to item two, there we are. Board member, discussion for possible action approval of L Co leasing Companies Will Serve Application for Sewer Services at eighteen sixty-three North in the Bill Highway. And I wanna point out that this is for water services only, and not for sewer services. That was a typo that we, we overlooked, so I will entertain a motion on it.
Utility board recommended approval.
I'm Mr. First.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried in so order. Item three, board member, city engineer Almberg, discussion for possible action, acceptance of CNH Spencer LLC proposal to replace the submersible motor and cable for the terrace well in the amount of thirty-six thousand one hundred forty-eight hours pursuant to NRS three-three-two point one-one-five. Robinson Mining Company to pay fifty percent of the total cost.
Well, uh, the utility board had a lot of, um, talk on this also, I'm gonna ask Frederick to chime in on this. There's some information that they didn't have this morning, and Frederick had offered to gather that up, and then there was a mention of maybe being on a little bit of a time crunch here, so they, they recommended approval on this, but after, yeah.
Big time. Big time.
Big time. What time?
That was a time.
Oh, okay.
That was a time.
Didn't pass, all right.
So I, I would like to wrap in that we let Frederick bring some more information in the next month's utility board meeting, if that's okay.
Yeah, so, so the issue here was, my name is Frederick Pate, I'm the developer, and I'm manager for the mine. So the issue here is, we received two documents, and we may wanna tie the tenth and the fourth item together.
Together.
Together. So we just received this forty-six thousand, and said, this is the cost of pump, uh, a model, and then push a pool to get the terrace well there. Now, there was no information as to what happened, why are we in the situation we are in? So we said, well, if it's a timing issue, we will pay half the cost, and the city pay half the cost. But if they want their mine to pay, we should be able to explain to our bosses what happened, and we don't have that information. So if we wanna wait, we can do a top route, we can do a root cause analysis, find out what exactly happened. The reason is to make sure that it doesn't happen again, and that is where we are going. But that may take a while, because it may take, who drilled the well, who installed the pump, who installed the V A D? There are a lot of information, we need to get that, to get to the point, to find out why the V A D and the pump, oh, sorry, why the motor failed. That's where we need to get to, I need that information to be able to present to my bosses, while I'm spending almost fifty thousand in, 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 uh, in the pump and model and push a pool. I don't have that information right now.
And that's perfect.
So that, that's what I'm asking. But if we wanna move forward and get this done before April, we are in favor, then who will pay half? The city pay half, we still need to find out what happened down the road, to make sure that it doesn't happen again, so that's all we're asking.
I did reach out to Carl, and, um. It doesn't seem to be a timing issue, he doesn't need that well right now.
Might be, did we concur with that, yes?
Yeah, it would be all right.
Okay.
But we wouldn't wanna push it too fast in April, because what's happening is, if seven P goes down during the summertime, we will need the terrace well to go, so we can't push this too far down the road.
But a month or two is completely.
Yeah.
I will entertain a motion. Let, let me open up for, as well, board member, city engineer Almberg, discussion for possible action, approval to higher rate basin irrigation to install an terrace well pump for total cost of up to ten thousand four hundred dollars, Robinson Mining, Robinson Event Mining Company to pay fifty percent of the total cost. Um, I will entertain a motion on these two items.
I move to table both.
A second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a second. Thank you, Frederick.
Thank you.
Everybody else be all right on that. Uh, we'll move on to item five, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action, first reading of ordinance seven-three-one, bill twenty-two, with approval to move to second reading, ordinance seven-three-one, I mean, it's chapter two, title four, for the city code of the city of Ely, providing residents who take their trash to an adjoining county's landfill and pay to that landfill and provide proof of that payment to the city claim, in order to receive a credit for the period of time the resident pays to the adjoining county's landfill. Kurt, do you wanna add, or look back on this?
Utility board recommended approval on this. This just kinda cleans up this city code, like now, the way it stands, if you lived in the city of Ely and had a house down in Park County, you could bring your landfill bill up here from Park County and get the fees waived up here. So this outlines the surrounding counties, and if they aren't actually taking their landfill to the adjoining landfill and not using ours, they could waive it now.
Any questions on this item? I'll entertain a motion on it.
Sure.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried in so order, we'll move on to item six, board member, city quickly, discussion for possible action, approval to remove the past due utility fee penalties in the amount of six thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-six cents from thirty-five Keystone Street, Route Nevada, at the request of the property owner Jeremy, Jeremy Lillen.
Utility board recommended approval.
Any questions about the utility board actions, right, your motion? I'll entertain a motion on it.
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Uh, we'll move on to ten, items for discussion, possible action of the Ely City Council, as recommended by the Animal Control Advisory Board. Item one, Chairwoman Roberts McHenry, discussion for possible action, approval for city council to send a letter to White Plains County opposing proposed ordinance five-oh-eight, bill number zero-one point two-two point twenty-two, and ordinance amending chapter eight point zero-four of the White Plains County Code, repealing the existing regulation that a dog owner must license the animal. We have, I was, um, how did they vote on it?
The chairwoman, the president.
Oh, I did.
Hi. So.
How did you guys find them?
Um, so we've been having a, um, voted unanimously on approving this letter.
And a draft of a letter is what's in there, as compared by the board, so.
Yeah, there were no changes to it.
Any questions, uh, for Chairwoman Murray to bring this up? With that, are there any more? Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried in so order. Uh, item two, Chairwoman Roberts McHenry, discussion for possible action, approval for city council to direct city attorney to draft revision to Title Five, section three B, dash eighteen, kennel regulations to require that the kennel or reader business license number be displayed in all advertising and purchase receipts. How did you guys find it?
Um, so we were in favor on most, we voted unanimously, and, um, we had a lot of issues, but back to our readers in our community, so this isn't going to hurt the effort. But we have one person in the city right now who has a reader's license, so there's a lot on social media locally, people trying to sell them to us. So we're, we wanna, um, be able to be proactive and willing to those people, so that they can get their license and follow along.
Any questions? To you, around the reader license. Uh, man, I don't like that one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yep.
Tom and I, on this, through the strange, this comes up, I watched Judge Judy's story. And this is the exact same thing that, that they're talking about happened, that, uh, people bought this dog, and it wasn't from a licensed reader, you know? And, well, I told you that, now, so it would've been, Judge Judy shouldn't have looked at the sticker on the window, so that was a great idea.
Any other further comments? Recommended by Judge Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried in so order, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Items for discussion, possible action, we're on eleven, uh, only the city council at this time has done the, the bills and the next. Are there any questions on that? I'll move to approve the next. What's, what?
We all have.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions to discuss?
Was this a minute long, or?
This is minutes and bills.
Okay, a question on the bills, or a comment on the bills. We had, uh, we're getting our fuel from the county to, and to Park Place, I think it's, uh, and Sun's now, and the fire department.
Think that's Christmas service.
Yeah, Christmas service, well, no.
No.
No, it's the, the place. So we still have, you know, they're doing a great job, the fire department, today, they, uh, road department's closed on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but there's still, the bulk of the bill, I think it was thirty-two hundred dollars from Hunt and Sons, came, went to the landfill, the bulk storage. So we may have to get with the road department to see if the fire department can get a key for going out, to go out there access to.
Does the fire department have a key for that?
Not to the gate, just, 'cause, 'cause they're, they're shut down all day Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and a lot of calls happened. It's just another, I can't remember the amount of savings we, the city realized, going through the county, the treasurer, Chief Holybryte, faced, it's a substantial savings. So we may be something, chief, the doctor, told it without.
Okay, any other, uh, questions on this, on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried in so order, we'll move on to B, all business, council member, fire chief, for various discussions, possible action, approval of resolution twenty-two, a resolution to amend the emergency medical services EMS billing rate schedule. I will listen to questions for the fire chief, or.
I've got from Tom, so the chief can chime in. This was brought before the council, I think over a month ago, and was very vague, and the chief had just got back from being off on the city, so he didn't, hardly know nothing about this. I said, there's not enough information, work in the back, and so forth. So they supplied the back, you know, with different, on the types of calls, and I briefly said with the chief, and I think some of the rates are pretty high. There needs to be some wording changes in there. That, one of the biggest problems, not a problem, it's a concern, is brought up by the lady back there, Jennifer. You know, you have a lot of, a lot of Medicaid calls, Medicaid's only gonna pay a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five bucks. So those poor people, they can't pay that, they're barely making it. So you're gonna deal, you know, with another thousand dollar bill they gotta pay, the stress, we'll be hauling them again for having a stress attack. The rates, I look at it like this here, I just recently completed my E M T refresher, along with eight E M Ts. Trust me, there's a lot of knowledge that the E M Ts have now, it's, you know, it's, uh, it's a new world going on right now. And that training, I look at these rates as, you know, the first two or seven hundred fifty dollars, that's like going to a general practitioner. Everything else, you gotta pay for a specialist. And these eight E M Ts, paratex, they, they perform a function up there that basic E M T cannot do. It's all about, you know, patient care, and getting them to there, and I think there's a value to that, whether it's a dollar amount, and it's too high. I don't know, but I, I can attest, after thirty hours of intense training, hands-on stuff, those people know what they're doing, and I know Jen's an A D M T, she went through all that extended training, it's, it's, the patient is what realizes the best of this here. That's where the jail check off, with the write-off, just scratch that word, write-off, out there, and I talked to the chief, it's not gonna be a write-off. Just go intercheck blood pressure, or whatever, but if something goes haywire, they gotta be transported, somebody's gonna have to pay for the man, man station and transport costs. So I think that's a missed moment right there. Uh, the examples of mileage from the scene to the transport location, that question I asked was, if they haul somebody from William B all the way to U of U, it's thirty-two dollars a mile. The winning rate, that's what you gotta do, you know? And, and just the standby time, and I agree with that, there's a lot of non-transport, a guy drunk on his butt, you get there, all right, you know? We've got paged out, we've got two E M Ts, people man station on standby, and there's a three hundred dollar charge, he's not gonna pay that anyway. So the write-off amount is, is gonna be horrendous, and I don't know, we're ever gonna recover all this, I, I, again, I wanna pay for the expertise these volunteers are putting out. They're specialists, they're, they're just not giving the number one drug, oxygen, they're giving a whole list of, of, uh, I guess if they drugs, you know, to help people get through this.
Medication.
Medication, yeah, yeah, sure. Whether or not the price is right, I think there's a value to the expertise of what these people have gone through, it's maybe.
Sure, that is definitely there, I mean, we, and, and these services are provided to our community, and, and we have to charge for them. But increasing some of these fifty percent, three hundred percent, I mean, that is disconcerting.
Could you reference that, was that what you talked about?
Uh, well, you're going on an A L S emergent level two from seven hundred and fifty to thirteen twenty-five.
Sure.
Like, that's a huge increase all of a sudden.
If you look at our previous charges, uh, on the twenty-seventeen.
Okay.
Resolution. Okay, see, see, it talks about some base transport fee.
Okay.
Okay, uh, right below that, additional E M S ambulance procedures, these were added procedures that was added to the first bill rate. So all, all we did was kind of lump some of this stuff into a level one and a level two transport, to include these additional fees.
But, but why would you do that if, if you're not always using a defibrillator? Why would you make that cost in the cost of everyone's?
It's not cost to everyone's, it's, it's the way, it's, it's the way it's, it's the level of, uh, emergency care that it'll be. Look, on this one here, on that second one, D L S emergent, where dual E M Ts and no advanced care, a defibrillator is not an advanced care for an E M Ts, and the cost that was approved in two thousand seventeen was two hundred dollars, so this will add up to seven fifty base, plus two hundred, it should be nine fifty, not a thousand fifty, just that. So, yeah, you would add the D fib, you would add the I V, and, um.
I mean, I just, I just don't know why you wouldn't, why you would lump those together instead of itemizing.
To better align ourselves with the billing procedures, uh, with the insurance companies, Medicare or Medicare. They're more apt to pay, you know, in a lump type level of, of, uh, of care than they would be additional, uh, add-ons. So if these add-ons were, um, were added on, they could deny that. Not only they can deny that, but Medicaid and Medicare can come back and audit us and deny it, and we'd have to back pay for two or three years. So this, this will safeguard from, from being audited in that fashion also.
So what happens when someone on Medicare gets transported, and there are fees that Medicare won't pay for? Do those go back personally?
We just, you know, we's we today.
I mean, that's.
We have a.
They go, they just pay the rate, they take whatever Medicare wants.
I think they're deductible, it's easier than seven dollars, don't count that.
I'm sorry, what was the answer on that?
They waive any fees above and beyond what Medicare doesn't pay.
The fire department does, so that bill doesn't go to the people? No.
No.
Just like a doctor's office.
Oh, that's not.
Certain, certain, yeah, in, in certain instances, yes, the only time that, uh, that customer will not get, I mean, would get the bill is if, uh, there was no really urgent emergency, and they just, you know, wanted a taxi service to the hospital, and, you know, you know, it's, it's gonna be documented there, I guess, it's pretty, uh, it's fine line, and how, you know, we're, we're not the ones to determine that, it's, it's the way we, the narrative is rolled up within our actions, and that's, that's up to the billing and, and that's accepted by the insurance or Medicare, if they want to pay, it's not urgent.
It's not our choice.
Eddie, we started to say something trivial about that, the billing, and you're in agreement, so what?
Well, I, I just appreciated what our chief Rivera, at the last meeting, was discussing, that it's a, um, it's recouping our costs, basically. If they're in form of an add-on, they're not paid, but if it's a month sum, then they're paid, so.
Recouping our costs from the insurance company.
Insurance, Medicaid, Medicare too, we'll save that extra additional in this type of more format for billing. So this, this is something that we, that, uh, I should say we, Assistant Chief, uh, Bodieala had researched for back in first of the year, twenty nineteen. And he kept gathering information, but he, he really worked hard, diligent, and he was our billing company to align this for, uh, we could, we could put a little more money, at least, that's, uh, we worked, you know, the way we were doing it, the way we should do it. Would be, uh, we could put a little more money on the cost.
Further questions?
So now, yeah, it looks like we're really raising it from seven fifty to over here, but if you look and you add, add this over here that we were already charging, like, say, like Jim gave the example, D fib, IV, um, if you had to have ducection, uh, we always do glucose, as Jim noticed at our last train, that is really important to know, uh, blood sugars, uh, cardiac monitor procedures. Like, right now, I'm, I'm in capital outweigh, I'm looking at body of four knee monitors for the fire department. And, and today's cost, I mean, we're looking average price of forty thousand dollars each. I mean, I'm not saying we're trying to buy all that with just these raises, um, with the national averages, we were billing between twenty-five and thirty percentile. This is gonna raise us up to seventy, seventy-five percent. I mean, these is our, these are our proposals, if you guys wanna change this, well, I mean, these prices down, you know, it's a country.
But relumping these is what's necessary for our billing purposes.
So if you.
Whether or not the rates go up or not.
Right, so if you look at what we used to charge, yeah, it looks like it's really raising it, just looking straight across.
Right.
But if you add these additional things on to the seven fifty, you know, it is raising it some, but it ain't that high that you, that you perceive it to be.
But you're saying that with this procedure, it, it increases the likelihood that insurance is going to cover more.
Insurance, insurance, Medicaid and Medicare.
And then, uh, our, our citizens are not going to see a fifty percent jump in what they're required to pay.
Yeah, you know, I, I can't answer that truly for you, it's, uh, you know, I, I just had services done for me, you know. I had a ten mile trip from Salt Lake City that was sixty, a hundred dollars. And there was, there was nothing, just, you know, the ambulance taxiway.
So I think that's. Another example, I look at, that second, I don't think, if I'm just an EMT, the base is seven fifty, I'm allowed to do the defibrillator, the longboard, suction, and the glucose. You add those charges that stated in two thousand seventeen, add that to the seven fifty, the care, the cost would be eleven hundred and sixty-five dollars, and they were proposing a thousand fifty. So you're getting the deal of a thousand fifty, if you, if you, I don't know if you can break it down like that.
It's, it was, like I say, there's, there's a lot of footwork that Bodie did with the billing company, and we're going by the advice of the billing company that, um, and, and I know they wanted me to do this probably a year before this, is, uh, for us to get that extra, these add-ons like this, they can just deny that, just be this clarity. If it's, if it's grouped in the level of care, you know, likely be paid ways.
Further questions for the chief?
I know, like I say, you know, it's looking straight across the board, it's like a great, big, uh, amount, it's worth adding extra. But it's not, I mean, there is, there is a cost increase involved.
So regarding this treatment, no transport, the three hundred dollars that was brought up in public comment, that that is not covered by Medicaid.
I think it's, so, I ain't sure if it is now, or soon shall be by Medicare or Medicaid. Right now, Medicare, Medicaid is doing, um, paramedic program through the hospital where somebody goes to their home and helps them with their blood sugar and coaching and stuff. Because Medicare, Medicaid don't wanna pay the seven hundred and fifty dollars. If we, if we can go to their house and give them glucose or something, and they're only charging, uh, D fifty push, and charge them three hundred dollars, Medicare, Medicaid were, were saying, hey, that's, that's a bargain. So they're really, you know, they're the ones that are really looking at trying to keep them people, uh, from being, having to be transported all the time. So it's just, it's just another avenue, yes. So, I mean, that's, you know, that's something like, say, it's clear to the council, if you wanna continue with that, if it, if it changes to where, um, that's not a true story, I will come back to you. And I'm, I'm not here to, you know, this community and these people here, I know they've bought all of them, and I'm not here to, uh, pay, pay off of, uh, our, our community to have this, but we are providing the service, and that's, like I say, the cost of, uh, what we're doing. I, you know, I just, I just pressed another analyst from, uh, when he bought twenty sixteen, they were for twenty thousand dollars in a few years, that, that prices increased that much already.
I would like to know, before we increase to that three hundred percent, I would like to know that that is being approved by Medicaid.
We could, we could, we could just take that off, and, and if you want us to provide just more effective information, I'm sure, through a resolution, we can just do the same soon.
Because primarily, that would be elderly people, right?
We may not do the research, I really can't give you the particular results on Bodie.
Should we take that off, or should we just take one, and then come back with that?
Well, we, you know, if you, if you wanted to approve this, then we can just add it on for resolution.
Correct.
Sure.
exclude that one, right?
Yeah, if, if you wanna do that, or if you wanna change any of these rates, you know, that's, that's.
Would there need to be hard burn on that EMS nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and twenty-two, just across the board, knock a hundred bucks off each one of them? That's, and that number nineteen would be nine fifty, instead of five fifty. That's two hundred dollars, wherever it mathed a hundred fifty.
What does the standby time consist of? Is that something you charged?
We're, we're already charged it, that, that was just included in the next, so, like, when we stand by for the open road race, rodeos, all the horse races and stuff, that's, that's something we've already charged. We just add to this resolution.
So if I, I could add just a little, just for my own clarification here, I think we've got two issues going. One is that we're changing the process in which we assemble our bills.
Correct.
And we wanna make sure that we're not in the process of doing that, we're not sticking people with the larger bills, but then we're also not shortchanging ourselves either than that. We're building less than we were before, because there are costs, because we're changing fundamentally how these bills get assembled. So I think doing this and then reviewing it and coming back and making sure that we're tweaking and adjusting as we go forward is not a bad idea.
Yeah, you know, we're providing the service, just like water, sooner, you know, you get, we, we know that, yeah, we would like to really charge, but, and, and really have the finest, the best, but at the same time, I think we need to move forward and, uh, we could settle our costs, and we're not gonna try, you know, this ain't gonna do it right, this is just a small.
But I think it's a good thing to make sure we're getting as much out of our insurance billing as we can, to make sure that we're on par with how they're doing.
Sure, we're, we're trying to utilize the best we can with what we're doing anyways. So whether we, like I say, whether you, we, uh, lower these rates or anything, it's still gonna provide a little more, you know, and be, and a better procedure.
So unless there are other questions.
So, and I, and I welcome anybody to come and visit us and talk on this one, one by one, Jim's all over, she'll live in the office and ask us some questions.
And we do appreciate the work on that, so unless there are other questions for the chief, I will entertain a motion on this before we go.
I would move to table it with Jim's recommendation and Ross checking into the treatment of transport.
One second.
Any further discussion or questions?
I just wanna clarify, on EMS nineteen, twenty, yeah, uh, twenty-one, number nineteen would be eight fifty, EMS twenty would be nine fifty, EMS twenty-one would be ten fifty, and EMS twenty-two, twelve fifty.
Eight fifty, nine fifty.
Eight fifty, nine fifty, ten fifty, twelve fifty.
So we will revisit this resolution again with those edits and then the information from the, or the treatment of transport, yes? So we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Any opposed? Terry, it's over, we will move on to item two, Fire Chief, Councilmember, Fire Chief Rivera, discussion for possible action. Approval of resolution twenty twenty dash three, a resolution to amend the rescue extrication billing rates. Do I have questions for the Fire Chief on this side?
I have no problem with that, the new billing, it's the billing company, they're gonna be able to build us out, we're gonna do the analysis, that, that.
Correct.
We gotta get this, in, in play, these, that, that's gonna happen.
Just, just to let you know, you know, I know there was somebody that commented, that commented last time, uh, the rates, again, just blancing out and got to know them a little bit. Looks like it's really raising the rate from two fifty to five cent five. The procedure for what we used to do was two hundred and fifty to initiate that rescue call, and it was two fifty an hour plus thereafter. So that, the original first rate was always five hundred, so it's raised at seventy-five. And, uh, the volunteer staff hours hasn't been raised since we implemented this back, I don't know how long before that was.
All county residents are exempt from this.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll say county residents are exempt from this. So, you know, the support vehicle responses add, you know, about fifty dollars, the hazmat responses added a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So I, I think the last comment was on first rate, uh, group A, you know, over doubling price, we're not actually doubling the price, it only turns out to be seventy-five dollars more for that first hour, and it's just a simplifying the billing procedure for the billing company.
Thanks for that clarification.
Any other questions with the chief or comments on this, all entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Terry, it's over. Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
Uh, we move on to B, all business, fire Robertson, discussion for possible action. Approval of the second reading of ordinance seventy-five, bill number twenty-one, ten, dash eleven. An ordinance amending Title Six, Chapter Twelve, Section Two, entitled Highways and Roads in City Ely Designated for the Purpose of OHV Travel. Bringing the city code into conformity with state law, clarifying certain sections of the city code, requiring that OHVs operate on city roads and highways to have liability insurance. Adding a severability clause, all of those provisions not designated shall remain unclaimed. I will entertain a motion on this side. Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second, of course, of course.
Sure, let that end.
This, this thing's got so much red in it, it looks like my fifth grade school card. I'm trying to find where Terry said the headlight thing.
Six, twelve, dash, five, I am sick, need help, I'm going to.
Here's my two cents on that. I, we need to draw a line somewhere here, and the line I chose to draw was between UHVs or UTVs and OHVs. This does not keep people from going out in the hills and doing whatever they wanna do. But if you're gonna be on our city streets, if you're on an ATV after dark, even if you have lights, I feel like the safety of that is just not worth the effort during the day, fine. After dark, unless you are in a roll cage UTV with lights and brake lights and the whole bit, you need to be in the garage or have that machine on the back of a trailer, and that's my two cents on it.
I totally disagree, and I have some day one on this, and under six, twelve, dash, six, we want that stricken out, you can always be used on stations, shall be restricted to thirty minutes, and we've always said, no curfew, but if you go a little bit later on, uh, under two, it says, it's written in this paragraph, if subjects do not fly off, uh, off high rate vehicle which is operating during daylight hours or in winter, that's the wrong amount. But she, actually, I found that in there, we talked a little bit about it earlier, that, that, if they have the legally required headlights and taillights and brake lights, and five hundred feet, you can see them, where was that at? Five hundred feet, okay, you can operate them if you're under NRS, if that vehicle has a headlight, you can lumens update on this five hundred feet, head of vehicle and at least one taillight that can be visible from five hundred feet and or reflector, then they should be allowed to drive them, go in and come, and go by what time they leave and come back to town. I totally think that should be it, for everyone to have insurance rates as required and a helmet. And if their vehicle is struck on the factory with at least one head, some of these UTVs have two, at least one headlight and one taillight, then they should be allowed to leave town and come back after dark. Because they're on there and stay on the OHV routes, without a doubt. So there's a clean, a couple, I am, I, and I won't approve that until that is stricken out of there, and maybe, and pass, maybe we walk past. The next thing is, is that there was one question I had.
Before we get off the headlights too, there's a lot of people that before work at four o'clock in the morning when it's dark, if they have a headlight and smoke loud, will drive to their grandma's house and remove the smoke from their sidewalks, so.
I don't advise there.
This is true. Well, structure, be strict on that, like, as it's not in NRS, it's something you wanna. The other was a speed, I found under the part of it, I had kind of a little bit of an issue with it, it says, uh, by all. Well, the speed restriction, I didn't want you to have that, it says that you can operate that, uh, as long as you.
Traffic laws.
Provide all, yeah, applied by all traffic laws, then we go in fifteen mile an hour, I'm okay with that, we're, we're discussing with the, with the. Three years ago, because we put that in there, the, the restrictions, that it is allowable for OHVs to call and assess fifteen mile an hour and operate at any time of the day. Within a city of Ely on all posted routes, so if you already got posted fifteen mile an hour sign, but the rest of the traffic laws, they should be advised. Whatever, I'd like to move to read.
We already have a motion and a second on the table, and I, I'm just gonna reiterate once again, having operated a less than conventional vehicle recently after dark, just the headlights is not the issue. It's dark out, these people do not have reflectors and side lights, so it's your modern cars do, and you side swipe them, and like I said, if it's a UTV and you're plated any time of the day, you're good to go. If you're on a dirt bike or you're on a ATV, and you wanna be within the city, that's fine, but it's gotta be daylight hours, and if you wanna be out in the hills, do whatever you want. But on city streets with other traffic, you know, I was riding around at eye level with everybody's bumper, and after dark, it is a different scenario. The fifteen mile an hour was a suggestion, I believe, of our sheriff saying that these vehicles do not have the same kind of tires and systems that modern cars have, or that everybody's regular vehicles do, and for children on their dirt bikes and stuff going through town, fifteen miles an hour, I think is more than appropriate. This does not apply to UTVs, if you have a plated, insured, registered UTV side by side, you're going the speed limit like everybody else is. But if you're trying to access your trails, that's the purpose of this. I don't think Sheriff Henry is gonna be ticketing anybody who's bowing snow, I don't think Sheriff Henry is gonna be ticketing anybody going over to grandma's to bow snow in the morning either. This is, this is, I think, where I'm most comfortable on this, we beat this to death, and all these red marks in here, because I spent a good day at city hall going over this, talking to people, writing it up, giving some edits, and putting it before Terry and all sorts of people, so this is what I'm going to back, and that's, that's my two cents on it. We need to make some compromises, and I think we've made them on both sides. And I think we've put something together that we can live with, that can be enforced, and that can, you know, protect people's privacies on their property. If you've got kids zooming back and forth, I think this has some tools for enforcement on that. I think it also gives some guidance to parents and people coming out of town, how you could be safe on city streets with your Ford F three fifty driving down next to your kid on an ATV. And this is, this is where I'm at. So we have a motion and a second to get further comments on this.
I'd like to make some more comment on it. I just came back from spending the week at Fortside, and then Parker, and then all over down there, and these, all these vehicles that have headlights and taillights are allowed to operate after dark. And I think it's ridiculous to be, I invite people up here to do it, they're at the hotel, and they get in a team to take off the full daylight, they go up on board and off, and wherever they wanna go, they come back up, and it'd be in violation if they have their kids on a, on an ATV instead of a side by side. State law allows us to have those kids, those adults, or whoever's operating them, with headlights on after dark, and I think we should do the same thing, so.
on after dark, and I think Resha is saying the same thing, so, right now, if you have a motion and a second, I would ask if you have a roll call vote on it?
I'd be happy to. State law allows us to be more restrictive than they are, and I think we need to be able to look at what's safest for our community, so if there are no other comments, I will cover a couple.
How's my flag is?
Right at this point, I will pass.
What is your reason for abstaining?
I would pass too. Pass the buck. I live in an area where kids with their dirt bikes are going right up my street day and night, and four wheelers also, and they cross into areas of my personal property, and I find it very objectionable, if they're, if they're at nighttime, I want to know, I want to be able to see if they're, what they're doing, the bottom end is a goal, he helped the other, or the, the child of the druthers, to see what's going on.
Well, I'll defer to council, but I believe you need to have a significant reason to abstain, I believe.
Well, I'm not really abstaining. I'll vote yes, okay?
Captain present?
Present.
Councilman's here?
No.
Councilman Oliver?
I'm going to vote yes.
Senator Moon, you're here? Aye.
Thank you for everybody's work on this, everybody's input.
Did I, yeah, did I just ask what you voted on? Did you vote keep, did you keep the nighttime restriction on?
The nighttime is on restriction for ATVs, if you have a UTV, there is no nighttime restriction.
I didn't like that, but you kept saying you want it to conform with NRS for nights, they don't sell ATVs anymore, maybe years ago they did without the side view cluster of mine.
I was not concerned without, I don't, it's over at the moment, we've done our work.
And I don't know what kind of, ATV you were driving, that you were facing, seeing with a bumper, seat on my, you'd be tired of the.
It wasn't an ATV, it was a three-wheel motorcycle, anyway.
I'd just like to inform the council, this afternoon, we received our grant agreement for our OHV education outreach, so now that this has been passed, once it's formally adopted, we can vote full speed on that.
And we'll be working with the sheriff's department on education and outreach to make sure that everybody has as much information as they, as they can, so nobody can leak ignorance.
Did you see the mayor on that three-wheel, I'll tell the cops. That was my next question.
It was not in this state, but it was insured and registered. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to item C, New Business.
Attorney.
Mayor Robertson, Cheyenne Gibson, Nevada Census twenty twenty Regional Coordinator, discussion on the presentation on the importance of the twenty twenty census and associated grant opportunities. Cheyenne was at the presentation with the Lieutenant Governor.
Yes, so just to begin, good evening, thank you guys for allowing me some time to speak at you for a second. My name is Cheyenne Gibson, and I'm the Regional Coordinator for the Nevada Census twenty twenty Outreach Team, my region is northeastern Nevada, which includes Ely, Elko, Erykah, and Lander, and I'm sure many people sitting at this table have had emails from me, I should have been able to meet with some of you lovely people, thank you so much for that, it's been super interesting for me, and essentially, my role as a regional coordinator is to assist the US Census Bureau by filling in gaps through community outreach, and that community outreach means meeting with community leaders such as yourself, today, the three different class presentations, which is super great, and then just getting out into our community and educating people about the census, the importance of the census, and also making it accessible for people in our community to complete the census, so I just wanted to emphasize the importance of the census. The upcoming twenty twenty census figures can affect economic development, which has been a huge topic of tonight's discussion, public health, education, political representation, housing, another huge thing that was talked about tonight, and research, and so just an example of that, in fiscal year twenty sixteen, Nevada actually received over six, six point two billion dollars derived from fifty-five different federal spending programs from the twenty ten census data, so I mean, that's a huge figure, and if we're not getting everybody counted, that figure could potentially lower, but more so, it could potentially be higher, which is so great for our super rural communities, for people who aren't from Ely, Nevada, I think a huge part is like just Vegas or just Reno, they don't even really know that means this, so this is a really great opportunity to put our community on the map, and so, with that, our goal is to ensure that Nevadans get their fair share of federal resources and congressional representation by encouraging the full participation of all Nevada, of all Nevadans in the census twenty twenty, and so I just kind of wanted to put that in perspective of what those figures look like per person, so this is all money back to our community, right? Nevada could receive more than twenty thousand dollars over the span of ten years for every man, woman, and child who is counted in the twenty twenty census. This funding, like I previously said, helps pay for education, affordable housing, healthcare, and infrastructure within our community and county, so, on the other side of that, if you don't fill out the census, you're giving those twenty thousand dollars to another state, where we could really use the funding, especially in our rural areas, and so I think, in order to do this, the goal, and my goal, is to provide census accessibility and amplification, so this year, there is going to be three ways to fill out the census, it can be done through the governor, which is, I don't believe that was a thing that was in twenty ten, but I'd have to check on that, so we really want to ensure that there's computer donation stations within our community, this is a super cool opportunity for organizations throughout Ely to have a computer designated for census signups for the census time, so from April to the end of May, those computer donations would be taken back as they are a donation, but we also have a really cool opportunity for places such as our library, other institutions to do a twenty twenty partner grant, and this essentially is, you partner with the census, say we're on board, we really want to encourage people to do the census, they're going to provide a two thousand dollar grant, which would allow that organization to purchase a computer, have the computer designated for census signups for the, for the duration of the time the census is, and then that organization will be able to keep that computer and the additional funds that came along with that grant. That's a super great opportunity, especially for our community, where some people don't have access to computers, and on the other side of that, don't even have access to internet, so I think it's going to be really important for us to have those computer stations available, and so then, finally, just wrapping up, the way that you all can help being community leaders is becoming a census ambassador, and while that might have like a stigma attached to it, it's really just saying, hey, let's do the census, maybe do a social media post, perhaps get some flyers, I just came into my marketing materials, I'm super excited, I'll write it out to you, and pass those out, and I just really think that anything helps, and even a meeting with you guys, one-on-one, would give me an opportunity to seek avenues that is the best way to outreach into our community, and other than that, just want to get Nevada counted and put our area on the map, so thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much, and your contact information will be with the clerk in case any.
Yes, absolutely. But I don't know, can I ask something? But.
Does anybody else have any questions for, for simply representative? Okay, thank you again.
Thank you so much.
We'll move on to item two, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, approval of terms to lease the former Army Building to the Nevada Department of Public Safety, and direction to the city clerk to authorize use of approved lease terms as a letter of intent to Nevada State Public Works Division. Just a reminder, this is just a proposal, the council's free to counter, the council's free to reject, the council is free to ask questions, to make their own counterproposal.
I just need to bring to the council contention that we did receive billing from Mount Wheeler, so that we can average that out, we also know that past water billing, they're on meter, they're at the armory, it's in the office of the military, and got current costs from progressive service for heating oil, the average utility billing throughout the year would be twelve hundred dollars, unless it was a severe winter, or the doors get left up, hence, since the state would prefer just a flat amount, so that the city, you know, they're just writing ones to check for the city, and we're paying all the vendors, all the utility providers, then that gave us a cushion in case, you know, people aren't watching the cost, so.
Did you want to give any background on how this, how this proposal came to, when everybody passed?
Well, my understanding is that the Department of Public Safety contacted our work supervisor and just wanted to look at the building, and after that, that they contacted you, and it's stressed an interest.